We're gonna try this, make sure volumes are okay for the livestream is good, okay? And now we'll adjust it for the room, so everybody in the room can hear. All right. Wow, that got quiet. We hadn't started yet. All right, so yeah, so Church Council, if you want to come on up. I should... I gotta be careful because moving in front of the speakers with a microphone is not a good thing to do. Unless, of course, you love squealing sounds. Yeah, we like to keep our ears. All right, so good to have you for this. Is this our second or third? Third? I'm at a loss. I don't know. It's their town hall meeting where basically we kind of open it up. We're gonna give you some updates on where we are and offer some space for you to ask questions, raise concerns, or celebrations, whatever it may be today. And this also goes for all of those who are with us online in this, because I believe everything is working. Is somebody... Are you monitoring? Okay. So Carol is monitoring the online live chat, just in case there's anything that comes up there. But let us just begin with a word of prayer. Let's pray together. Gracious and Almighty God, God, I thank you for Journey of Hope. I thank you for the ministry that you have called us here to be involved in. God, I pray that as we gather together, as we share hopes and dreams and visions, that God you would remind us that you are knocking down walls, that you are opening up doors, that you are doing far more than we could ever imagine, so that we can participate in your kingdom. God, this is our breakthrough prayer that we lift to you each and every day. And so, God, be a part of this conversation. God, send your Spirit to and dwell within each and every one of us, and allow us to truly see your plan for us. All this I ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you. All right, so as you are fully aware, we're talking about this possibility of the merger with Good Shepherd United Methodist Church in Bartlett. Just looking out to see, because I was... There were some that said they might have actually been here, but I don't see anybody from Good Shepherd here this morning. If you are here from Good Shepherd, raise your hand. Okay. So here's what I wanted to do, is kind of give you a little bit of an update on where we are, and what are the steps that are moving forward, and then also possibly get to a couple of the questions that were submitted with the straw poll that we did. Because I asked you, not only, I said, you know, are you willing to accept where your church leadership is guiding, but also whether or not you had any questions about this process. And so there were a few questions that were brought up that we'll try to get to. But also wanted to let you know, actually, I should probably say this, because we have already had one meeting of the merger teams. So the team from Good Shepherd in Bartlett, as well as a team from Journey of Hope. We have met once. We worshiped very briefly together. It was a beautiful time. And talked a little bit about the overarching theme of this process. And so before I go any further, I would love for those who are on the merger team to just stand up for a moment, so that we see who we have on the merger team. So yes, we have Mary Becker, Kimberly Lynch, Gary Newton, Carol Burris, Greg Cherry, Dan Gardner, and myself. Of course, I'm kind of bouncing back and forth, so thank you. What's that? Oh, yes. So you can all be seated. Thank you very much for that. There is one other team member who is not technically a part of the merger team, but is a member of Journey of Hope who is very intricately involved, and that is David Ackman. David is our attorney, and he is working on all of the merger documentation, all the legal stuff that needs to happen, because he knows that stuff. We don't, so we ask an expert and say, yes, here, can you do this for us? And so he's doing a fantastic job of getting documents ready in the time that we need it. But if you notice, the people that are on your team, on your merger team, if you have any questions or anything that comes up even after this town hall, those are the people that you can go and talk to, to get any answers that you may need. You can also ask anybody that's on your Church Council leadership, because we will be keeping them posted as to the progress that we are making. So, a couple of things on quick questions, and then we'll kind of open it up to everyone here, and see if there's anything else that the merger team wants to share, or the leadership team wants to talk to you about. What progress has our task forces made? Should we get more on track at JOH before moving forward? So the progress, the task forces that we're talking about are those three goals that came out of the CAT survey. If you remember, we took the Congregational Assessment Tool, and it came up with three different goals: reaching young families, connecting people within the church, and helping those broken by life circumstances. And so there are a number of things, the last town hall that we got together, there were a number of things that people have, on those teams, have mentioned that we're working towards. This merger actually fits just about all of those categories, because then we actually multiply that by looking at how do we reach young families in the Bartlett area? How do we reach, or how do we connect people in the church? And now this is where it's going to be really interesting. How do we connect people in Journey of Hope? All, which means all campuses of Journey of Hope. How do we connect them and make sure that we continue to move forward? And how do we help those broken by life circumstances, both here in Elgin and in Bartlett? So we are still moving forward on those three goals. That is something that is incredibly important to us. And so everything that we do within the merger, and with adding a satellite, will go towards those three goals through those task forces. So yes, that will keep moving forward. It's not, we don't reach a certain endpoint that says, okay, we're done with the task forces, let's move on. Those will constantly be with us. How will this enhance JOH's online presence? And secondary to that, will it prompt improvements to the often iffy technology? We learn something new every week, right, technology team? We seem to learn something new every time. We are perfecting it, but obviously, we are not perfecting it. Will it add more stress to it? Yeah, possibly at the very beginning, but we are hoping that with this process, that this will kind of connect the two, and will actually improve online worship at the Bartlett campus as well. And so, yes, it's going to add more to us, but I think in this overall process, we are getting better at it. We just gotta work through all those little bugs and get it to where... Let me tell you, a month or so ago, we learned something that we didn't know two years ago, and that was a little encoder box that we bought with the initial system that we set up, was causing a whole bunch of issues with our technology, was causing the delay in the audio and video. It was also causing the dropped livestreams for so long. We finally figured that out, almost two years in. Our people at Subsplash said, oh yeah, we don't use those encoders. So they recommended something else, and so that is what we've been using. Actually, that's what we're using right now. It's OBS, which is a software that we use. So yes, we are increasing that, but it will initially add some stress to it, but I think we're gonna find that it's getting better. How will it impact our current, ongoing programs and missions? It's going to expand them, is the way I see it. And that is, is that what we currently are doing here at the Elgin campus will be increased by also adding people in a Bartlett campus, that they will also participate in that. Likewise, there's actually one thing we were talking about during the first merger meeting. They, one of the, one of the events that they do is something called Bartlett Fest. Has anybody been to Bartlett Fest? There's a couple of people. I know, we're in Elgin, so that's a little different. Bartlett Fest is a five-day festival around the Fourth of July weekend. And during that time, they have a booth that they sells water, soda, and Gatorade. But they're also in the community, and that happens around July 4th. And so they were like, hey, can we still do that? And we're like, yes, can we help? Can we get the word out? So that's, you know, their ministries as well will expand because of the connection that we have with each other. This is very similar to what we start talking about with the United Methodist Church, and the connection that we all have with all of the churches. This just will happen to be another church that has the Journey of Hope name on it. So I will see it increasing and multiplying our current and ongoing programs and missions, because it will involve all campuses. So that is another way. What does all of this entail? That is a really wide-open question. So let me at least say this. What it will entail will be connecting the two churches together with the same name, different campuses. We will all be Journey of Hope. It will not be Good Shepherd Journey of Hope and Elgin Journey of Hope. It will all be Journey of Hope. And that frankly, is the only way this is going to work. Is if that we all get behind this vision of saying, we're all one church. Yes, you worship in the Bartlett campus, but you're still part of Journey of Hope. Just like we, we are worshiping in the Elgin campus. We are still a part of Journey of Hope, connected with the Bartlett area. And so it just looks to, you know, when we look at this, it's expanding the mission and the vision of Journey of Hope outward. And that is what we're called to do, is to reach new people, and to reach people with the grace and the love of God. And I tell you what, I mean, the leadership team I know knows this. I mean, there is an excitement here, there is a passion for what the mission and the vision is of how we can get out there and spread that news. That is what the Good Shepherd or the Bartlett campus is already feeling. After having a couple of conversations with them, they said, we cannot believe the excitement that has come into this building. And so they are excited. So that is part of it. We will look like one church, two campuses. All the other details are going to have to get worked out. Staffing, worship times, stuff like that. All of that stuff is going to have to get worked out over the course of the next few months. I will say this, that as we move forward, part of the process will actually be to close the Good Shepherd Church down. So what will happen is that for about two and a half months, Good Shepherd will close. There will not be a church there. There will be a couple of events that will be happening there. They have some reoccurring things, kind of like us, and Weight Watchers, and the Coin Clubs, and the other things that we have coming in here. They have that down there, and so that's going to continue on during the shutdown. But what that also does is that allows us about two and a half months to rebrand, to make some remodeling changes, to change the sign-out front, and then relaunch in September. To relaunch as Journey of Hope Bartlett Campus. And take that energy with us as we expand out into that area. So that's kind of what that will entail. One of the steps that everybody should be aware of, because you'll get notifications here pretty soon on that, as Dave works through the paperwork, is there will need to be, as many of you know, an all-church conference. An all-church conference, we usually have one every October, November, where we approve the budgets and the nominations and all of the other stuff. This will be a special church conference that we will have called. And that church conference, tentatively, I have a date for you. I'm sure I can give you the date. June 25th. June 25th is a Sunday, so it'll be like right after worship. It'll be kind of like this. We'll move from there... Actually, is that a fifth Sunday? That's not a fifth Sunday, is it? No, okay. So we'll move from worship right over to here, and we will have a special church conference where we will vote. And that will be the vote for the merger. You will have paperwork prior to that on what that merger agreement looks like, as we are working through it right now. But June 25th is the date for the all-church conference vote. All right? That is what I have. Let's see here. Why? What is the goal? Another wide-open question. Another question that was actually asked that kind of goes along with this was, was how did this process begin? And so here is your, here's a secondary 531 moment for you this morning. Because I serve on a congregation, a team through the conference. It's called Code RED. Code RED stands for Congregational Development and Redevelopment. And that is led by, it's actually led by Martin Lee and a number of other people. And so we get together and we talk about churches. Churches that might merge, churches that might close, churches that are redeveloping. How can the conference help those churches in moving forward? I got a call for the Code RED team that says, hey, we need you to come down to Bartlett to have an initial meeting with them, with the Code RED team. And so what we did was, we went down there and we said, okay, what are your current realities? What are your hopes and dreams? To find out where Bartlett was at that particular moment. And at that particular moment, they were like, hey, we need to do something. We need to merge with somebody, or we need to close. So what's it going to be? And so this is what they were deciding on. We listened to them. Code RED got back, and we talked a little bit about it. And can I say this one thing that, you know, when you want something to happen, or when you want it to happen in a different way, and you tell God, just take it this way? And God says, no. There's the times that you go, okay, God, I got it. Because I'll tell you what, when we heard what they were doing, we had talked to them about a possible merger. And we talked to them about a couple of other churches that they should really kind of merge with. None of those were good matches. None of those were going to work that well for them. God just opened doors, as we had been praying for God to open doors and to knock down walls, to give us new power, new opportunities, and new life for growth here at Journey of Hope. And so after the meeting that I had with them, we were kind of pushing them in a certain way, and it kept coming back to Journey of Hope continually. And so finally, we just said, okay. All right, God, I got it. I'm not going to tell you no anymore. I'm just going to say, okay, God, if this is going to be it, then you're going to need to guide this. You're going to need to open the pathway up for us. And so with that being said, then we kind of started having conversations. I had conversations with Good Shepherd, and we talked about what it could look like as an adoption merger, because we as leadership, we're talking about multiplication from our CAT survey. And that multiplication was either going to look like an all-digital campus. It was going to look like a location possibly over in Pingree. And we kept looking in those directions, and God said, how about this direction? And then just laid this on our hearts. Laid it on my heart, so I was like, okay, here it is. I'm not saying, by the way, and this might scare you even more, I'm not saying that Pingree is off the table. I'm also not saying that the digital campus is off the table. We are still working towards some of those things. So, but this is one that is just laid out for us. And so Bartlett made the initial plea, and then God got involved and kind of opened doors for this pathway to happen at Journey of Hope. So that is where we're at. The goal really is to follow our mission, to make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. And since the CAT survey told us that we really need to multiply, this is that multiplication that God has placed in our lap. And so then we can take this and take that mission to Bartlett, and to work on making disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. That, I think, those are the questions that we had, it was the initial questions that we had. That's kind of where we stand right, well, where we stand right now is, like I said, we've had one meeting with them, and initially talked about some of the basics. We have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow night in Bartlett. So your leadership team will go down there and talk with them again tomorrow night, and we'll start to expand our conversation into a number of different areas, so that we can kind of move this ball forward. But that is where we are, and the biggest thing that you probably need to remember is June 25th. June 25th as that all-church conference vote. But this is a town hall, and so it's not just me talking, and it's not just anybody from the leadership talking. It's hearing from you. And so, hi there, how are you? Hi. Look at that smile. She's so happy. Hi. So it's asking you, and so if you've got questions, if you've got concerns, that is what we are here for, to hear your voices. And so I open it up to the floor. You know, what do you have that we could possibly answer for you? Or at least get an answer for? Yes, Carol. I'd move this over here, but I have a feeling that that speaker might, I'll repeat it to the people online. Okay. So the question is, is what has kept the Bartlett campus from growing? Because obviously, as we talk about it, it's, it has been in that steady decline. And COVID hit, and unlike Journey of Hope, where we multiplied during that time, they really dropped during COVID. But what has kept them from growing? And I think if I listen to the hopes and dreams, and the things that they shared with us, the current realities that they had, part of it I see was from, a good part of it was from leadership. The leadership of making sure that we have what we need, and turning kind of inward. Now, we've talked here before about the idea of purpose over preference. And the purpose over preference is deciding that the mission of the church, the mission of Journey of Hope to go and make disciples of Jesus Christ was more important than our personal preferences, so that if something needed to change within the church, that we would make that change, so that we could reach other people. And so there have been a number of changes that we have done, and the big thing for us has been the, has really been the attitude shift and the passion that we brought. I think that's what's missing, especially after talking with some of their leadership, when they said, there is more energy here than there has been in a long time. The energy, because once you have that energy, and once you have that passion, when you go share that with your neighbors, they're like, yes, I need to check this out. Because here's what I shared with, in fact, I might have shared this with Hepworth when I first got here. So when you sit, when you go out there and invite somebody to church, and they say, hey, what church do you go to? Should I come? Oh yeah, it's okay. You know, does, if you get an invitation to go somewhere, you go, oh, it's okay. You know, there's brand-new restaurants in town. You want to go see that brand-new restaurant? Somebody just come from there. How is it? Oh, it's okay. Do you really want to go there? I'm not really sure. But if you are passionate about it, if you are excited about it, and they're like, hey, what about your church? You go to that Journey of Hope, don't you? You go, oh, yes. Who is it? I think it was Sherri Weber. Our pastor's on fire. Not literally, but... When you go with that, with that attitude and say, hey, there is stuff going on. There are so many people there that would love to talk with you, and they're excited about it. People are going, yes, I got to get there. And I got to get there next week, and then I'm going to stay, and I'm going to stay. So yes, I think that's, I think that's a major factor in it, Carol, is the overarching passion and excitement that has just gone. The vision and the mission has faded. And it got to the point where, and frankly, there's a lot of churches that are this way, that are just in it to survive. I just want, I just want to have a place that I can be buried in. And it's like, well, but what about the next generation and the generation after that? That's where the purpose over preference comes in. It's like, okay, this may not be what I want, but I know that generations after me are looking for this. And so I'm willing to sacrifice my personal preference to make sure that the purpose and the mission of Journey of Hope continues to move forward. And so I think that's what's really going to help when we go down there. Plus, the whole idea, and actually, I didn't mention this before, but you know, we talked a little bit about an associate pastor. We are actually in conversation with that, about an associate pastor that would cover that area. And I said, yes, but here's the deal. They got to live in the area, and they got to get into the community. Because right now, it's not happening. They are kitty-corner from a high school. They should be in the high school, talking with the students, talking with the administrators or whatever. They should be in the neighborhoods and the communities around them, spreading the word of who Journey of Hope is. And that's what we're going to make sure of as we move forward. So thank you. Yes, Janice? So the question is whether or not we will actually be sharing the same service. So the initial plan is during that, during that two-and-a-half-month shutdown period, they would either be, the Bartlett campus people would actually be here worshiping in Elgin, or they would be worshiping online. I told them, I said, look, I said, worship online, here in person. If you want to worship online at another church for a couple of months, that's fine. But if you worship here, online, or in person, then you get to know people, and you get to know the congregation. They start to get to know you, especially if you come. But even interacting online with them will help get to know people. As far as that and moving forward, whether or not they will be the same service. My initial vision, and this obviously can change through the merger team conversations. I told them the other day, I said, this is going to make more work for me. But this is the way I see it kind of working, because there's, there are some churches that have multiple campuses that will, that one pastor will create a five-week worship series. And the associate pastor will create a five-week worship series. And so they preach them at both locations. And then after they're done with that five-week, they flip. And then the one pastor does their five-week service, five-week series here, and the other goes down to Bartlett and does the five-week series there. That is less work, because then I'm only preparing about 26 messages a year instead of 52. But the way I see this actually working, and I feel like it would be a better fit for us, is that we would both, you know, the associate pastor and I, and the worship team would get together, and we would plan out six months to a year of worship series. And we would, both campuses would follow that same pattern. So while we're doing Love Triangle in Elgin, they're also doing Love Triangle in Bartlett. The music may be a little different. The message, the theme would be the same, although the message would be different, because I'm not writing a message for an associate pastor to preach. I will be writing mine. The associate pastor will be writing theirs. But that also means that if there's a hiccup, if there's something that happens, and we got to flip for a Sunday, we can flip, and we don't, and we don't miss anything. It's the same theme. But like I said, the overarching worship series is the same, but some of the individual things would be different, depending on the location in that particular worship service. So thank you. Yes? Are there downsides for the merger? I hope not. But, but it's all, huh? Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things where you never know. I mean, as we look at it from a visioning standpoint right now, we don't necessarily see the downside. There may be, I know that there has been concern when we started talking about, okay, so how many times are Pastor Jared, are you going to preach down in Bartlett? And I said, at this point, I'm planning once a month would be it. But that would offer me an opportunity to get to know the Bartlett campus people as well. And so some, some might see that as a downside. Thank you. Thank you. For all of you at home watching online, she said, that might be an upside too. So, yes, because you know what? None of us, none of us know who our associate pastor is. God knows who our associate pastor will be, but we don't know it yet. Yes?
The first downside is he sometimes doesn't share the microphone. I'm saying that tongue-in-cheek. Bev and I have been talking about this, and I was saying, one of the people at the Tuesday night meeting this past Tuesday. A couple of things, I'm reflecting on strengths that Good Shepherd has that Wesley did not have. One is they're younger than our membership that we had at Wesley, so that's a promise. I, talking to Bev, I said, there are two programs that they don't have that they probably should have. have. One is a United Methodist Women's Organization. Secondly, no adult Sunday School there. I think that we could help with that leadership." There is a possible downside, as I think about this. Pastor Jared is going to have to be shared by this population. He's talked about going and presenting a message at Good Shepherd one time per month. That means he won't be in this building. I think that's a possible downside. And we all love you, but we have to show our love in being able to share our pastor. And I think that also goes to thinking about attending worship over there once in a while, maybe helping out with their work committees. I think back at Wesley, when we were falling apart, we couldn't fill 15 positions on our committees. We didn't have enough hands, and that's part of Bartlett's problems. But I guess I can emphasize that idea of... Pastor talked about love this morning. If we love our neighbor, we should be willing to share. And that's all I have to say.
I'm a loudmouth enough. Anyway, in regards to also a major, major upside, another major, major upside, everybody asks, you know, "How long is Pastor Jared going to be here?" Because we know a lot of times with ministry, you know, that their pastors are in for a while, and then they get called to another service. Well, this does not 100% guarantee us that Jared will be here. But if we look at it from the positive, you have... If they're going to replace Jared, they have to be willing to find someone who is going to take on two campuses. And be able to do the amount of work that it's going to take, that he's willing to do, that's on his heart, to be able to keep these two campuses up and running. So if nothing else is well, major upside, job security.
Did you want to say something? No? Okay. Yes? Yes? Okay. So yes, the question is around finance, because we haven't really talked much about finance as far as Journey of Hope absorbing another church and being able to do that, financially speaking. How are we sitting and how are they sitting, so that this could be a possible matchup? And I would say that the answer would be yes. But now here's what we want to make sure that everybody is aware of, is that Bartlett owns their building. They own their property, so it is debt-free. Bartlett itself is debt-free. So there is no mortgage, no loans that they have to pay for. Yes, they have insurance. Yes, they have staff. And so that will be absorbed into Journey of Hope, because the idea of the finance would be is that we are all Journey of Hope, which means that while there may be a separate deposit, logistically speaking, because of the location, that everything goes into the Journey of Hope accounts, and that everything gets paid for out of the Journey of Hope accounts. With that being said, with the adoption coming in, we're not just gaining a building with expenses and everything else that then we have to in turn take care of. We will. But the idea is that in that adoption process, we also gain 20 to 25 members, 20 to 25 giving units, that will continue on in that giving. So that helps in that respect. They do have some cash that is in their accounts, and so there is a little bit of backup, which partially is, as we view this, is going to be in some of the remodeling, changing out the sign. And so we're going to end up using some of those funds for that. But on a grand scheme of things, yes, we will take on all of their expenses, but they are also still giving in their expenses. And so it's not a... It's not just starting from scratch. The other piece of that puzzle comes with the associate pastor. We've talked a little bit about what the associate pastor looks like, half-time, full-time. Is it an appointed process or is something that we hire? Right now, we are envisioning that that would be a hired position, so it would not be an appointed position. There's a couple of differences that happen with that. Because if it is an appointed position, sometimes you have the salary, you also have housing allowance, and a number of other things. Within hiring, it is hourly. It's what we decide. And so that keeps that part low. They were close to kind of making... They were still in the red every year, which is kind of what got them to this point, because they were starting to use some of those funds to cover their expenses. But with some of these changes and with the vision of multiplying and expanding the ministry in those areas, that the income would rise to also offset that. But that also points back to the possibility of starting something in the Pingree area, where that would have been a cold start, which would mean that we would have assumed all debts, all expenses with launching a new church service, because we wouldn't have any giving units. Here, we actually have some giving units that are coming over to help us with that. But according to, as I had a conversation with Dave Kellenberger, he's like, "We're sitting in a really good shape..." "We're sitting in really good shape right now to be able to do something like this." So yes. Yes, Ron? Major repairs? No. There is a list that their trustee has sent, and I've since forwarded on to Chuck. There's some smaller things that they're working on. The building was put up in, I think, in the 80s? Yeah, '82. And so it's a relatively new building, but... '92? '92. But yeah, as far as we know, no major remodeling that they... They actually just did some work on their well as well. Go figure. We put in a new well pump, they put in a new well control or something, so another big expense for them. Yes? Town? Oh, on their roster? Their membership? Always weird. Oh, she wanted to know what their population was. What is their membership at Good Shepherd? And while we all know that church membership roles are kind of fluid, we're not really sure. Right now, I think on their roles, they had about 120 to 130. They are currently worshiping in the neighborhood of 20. Prior to COVID, I believe it was closer to 50. But as COVID hit, they're a number that scattered, and have just not come back. So right now, they're in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 in worship, which, by the way, then leads back to, you know, as far as what we do for the membership vote, which means we send a letter to all of their members. And I said, "Look, the way this letter is worded is a way to actually improve your attendance." Because now, when you're sending a letter out that's saying, "Hey, there is something really exciting happening. We're going to be adopted into Journey of Hope. We're going to have this new mission and vision. And while we would love to just have your vote for this, we also would love to see if you wanted to come back and experience this new excitement and see what happens with that." Yes? I'm sorry, what? How would... Yes. Yes. So for many of you, you remember when Wesley and Hepworth joined together and we merged together. We basically took all the teams and just squashed them together. So we took both church councils and pushed them together, both SPRCs, both trustees, all of those teams came together. So they were larger teams than either church was used to seeing. Actually, there were some that were larger teams than I was used to seeing in quite some time. But that would be the same thing that would happen here, that once the merger process is complete, church council would be their church council and our church council, and it would become one church council for the first year, so that all voices are heard on the table for all the decisions that have to be made. After the first year, as we go into the next church conference season of saying, "Okay, so who's on the nominations? Who's on what team?" Then we start narrowing it down and saying, "Hey, there's some people from the Elgin campus that have wanted to get off this team for a long time, but now we have somebody from Bartlett who will take it." So the idea is that all leadership teams will have people from both Elgin and Bartlett on it, because the vision that I have for this is not a parent and a redheaded stepchild. I don't want that. This is all Journey of Hope. And that's, like I said at the beginning, that's the only way this is going to work, is if we all are Journey of Hope. So, yeah. Yes? So the question is, you know, how would office hours look? Would I have two offices? What about the associate pastor? Yeah. So the office hours and everything would stay the same here in Elgin. The office hours, I'm not sure, 100% sure, how many days they're open down there. But the idea is that the associate pastor would have an office at the Bartlett campus, that there would be areas that if I wanted to go down and work in the Bartlett location, I would be able to do so. Not sure how that would work out. But then the idea is that, yes, I would continue to get out in the community here and spend my time in the Elgin area, and the associate pastor would be kind of the face of the Bartlett campus. So they would be out in the communities, in the office, and making sure that there was people that could notice who it was that was leading down there. I don't know if that answered that question? Yeah. Yeah, they have a office admin that's down there, and there would still be an office admin at the Bartlett campus. They have some, not very similar, I think. I'm sorry. I keep forgetting that. They wanted to know whether or not they have young families. They have some. They've got some high schoolers. They've talked about a contemporary worship service that they would do when the high schoolers would come back into town, or college students. I'm sorry, high schoolers. Do they ship the high schoolers off? And if they do, where do they do that? Because I'm sure some of you might... No, no, just kidding. But yes, when the college students come back, then they help lead worship in that area. But yes, there are a couple, like Gary said, there are some that are younger, but I would put 40s, in the 40s range. But there's a... But yes, they have... They've had a preschool, preschool daycare in the church, very similar to what we have had here in the basement, or not in the basement, on this level. They also had a daycare preschool, which we're actually looking into. There's word that there is somebody who's a licensed daycare provider that wants to open up shop. And so that may be an option that we do with the Bartlett campus. There's also another ministry that wants to worship on Sundays after the Bartlett campus is done. You come through, because you're not going to... Well, as you find where you're at here. But there's another place that would like to worship in the Bartlett campus later on on Sunday. And so the vision would be is that the Bartlett campus would look an awful lot like Journey of Hope Elgin, and that is, we reach out to Weight Watchers, we reach out to Beyond Church, we reach out to Coin Clubs and... And yeah, Children's Community Theater. We look for ways to engage with the community by inviting them to space. Some of them pay. Some of them don't pay very much, but some of them pay. And so, I mean, it's just a beautiful thing to be able to offer that space to the community. There... Yeah. I don't know. The question is whether or not there was a large pool to pull from for associate pastor candidates. And a very good question. There's one that's on my radar right now that I've been talking with our district superintendent about. And so he's kind of the one who's got the pulse on it of saying, "Okay, this one might be a good fit for you. This one might be a good fit." But it would be ones, as I said before, that we would interview. So SPRC would sit down with them and say, "This is what we're looking for. Does this person fulfill what we are looking for?" Whereas in appointed process, you sometimes get what you get. It's like, well, we don't... You know, especially in certain conferences, because conferences are very short of pastors. The district superintendents are grabbing a hold... I'm going to say this really quietly, but district superintendents are grabbing a hold of a lady and saying, "Hey, you would be really good in a pulpit." So if Jeffrey calls you, you might want to think about answering that phone call. But Northern Illinois is not in the predicament that, say, Wisconsin Conference, Iowa Conference, Dakota's Conference. They're in a really difficult place, because there is such a shortage of pastors. We are not quite to that point yet, but we do have a lot of licensed, local licensed pastors, which are not a district superintendent's supply, but they're kind of that next step before looking into ordained ministry. So, yeah, I don't know how big the pool is. Like I said, there's one right off the bat that Jeffrey got me in contact with, and I've had a brief conversation with him. But we'll be talking a little more after that. Yes, Dan? So the comment was made, as far as population, is that 20% of Bartlett's population changes over every year. Whereas Elgin is much more stable. So... And looking at the demographic insight, it's pretty even. Bartlett is not making huge strides of growth, but they're also not declining. It's pretty even keel at this point. I think those numbers are going to change over the next couple of years, because if you drive down to that campus site, there is a new subdivision that has gone in on the north side of the road. On the west side of that area, there's some rather large homes. And just west of that, there's a new residential subdivision getting put in. They're putting in the drainage and the plumbing for that right now. So there is more growth that is happening in that particular area. Yes? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because this is... I mean, obviously, we want to focus on the merger, but I think this is...
I have been talking to both Carol and Mary about an idea that I had, and they said, "Bring it to the town hall." So here I am. You all have heard me talk about Heifer up in front with the Young Explorers many times. But I do other things, charity things, that I would love to share with everybody. I mentioned one last time, but I would like to... I'm sure I'm not the only one who has not a church charity that they would like to tell their fellow members about. And I think it'd be fun if we did that in two ways. One, a mission moment once a month in church, where we get up and talk, and we'd put it in the bulletin, so somebody could find the login online. The one I would like to mention again today, because it's on my heart, is I am part of Donors Choose. Teachers, many of whom we all know, somebody who teaches, put up a request. I got into this because my niece, Sarah, teaches in Hawaii. And she said, "I need books for my classroom." And you are not surprised when I said, "I'll be glad to give you some books." And so, it's a way to support perhaps a teacher you know. These days, I get a list, I can, Donors Choose says, "I want to know Elgin Process." Show me who in Elgin. So Highland, down the road, I just bought books with them. I choose to buy books. Other people choose to buy different things. On Saturday, when I was driving with my son-in-law to meet with Laird Funeral Home, I received a text from Sarah. She had requested some books and several more expensive things to the tune of like $800 that she needed for her classroom. And she wrote to say it had all arrived. And I had put some money in. My daughter Carolyn put in the rest. So Carolyn supplied all this. And she supplied me with a picture of students being excited and listening to a young man say, "I'm gonna come get the book from your classroom, because I'm embarrassed to ask for it someplace else." So it was, on a very bad day, it was a very great text to receive. So I want to, I would like to share that kind of story. And I think you all probably have other kinds of things that you support, that you think, gee, everybody should know about it. I know Doug puts his heart and soul into pads, for instance. Now, we all do pads already, but maybe a chance for him to talk a little bit more about it sometime. So, thank you. I wanted to put that out and say, "Worship team, think about it."
Yes. Thank you, Mary. All right. No, 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 that's fine. Yeah. So we're at about 11:30. I'm gonna ask Carol to come up and close this. She doesn't know. So before we close, any other things that are burning on your hearts? Other than your pastor's on fire? All right, Carol?
I'm glad to hear that you're on fire. Rather than on Friday, we had a conference-led meeting luncheon here. And it was pastors that will be retiring in the next 10 years and helping give them guidance about how they approach the next 10 years and how they approach the next couple of years as they, how do they help prepare their congregations and prepare their own hearts for this change in life? And the leader of it looks at Jared and said, "Jared just told me that he's retiring." And we said, "Ah, excuse me? No, no, no way." "If you want to have some challenging conversations, don't say that around here with us, because we'll let you know where we stand." And we'll let him know where he stands. So, and I just want to, some people have asked me today about the green chairs, because they have been in the hallway for a couple of weeks, but you may not have really noticed them. It's hard not to notice them. But so, but people are unaware of why they are here. As Jared mentioned, Weight Watchers is now having three days a week meetings here in our community room. And these are chairs that they were using in their studio for meetings. And, you know, it's kind of like when a child goes to their grandparents' house, they want to take their favorite stuffed animal with them. We let them bring their chairs with them. Now, they actually asked if we could use them, and we said, "Sure, bring them, and you can use them and have some familiarity." So that's where the green chairs have come from. And we're gonna be getting some others in the future from another Weight Watcher studio. So that's wonderful also. But they're not green, yes. They're a little bit quieter color. And we would use these in here all the time, but they don't match our paint. And we're not gonna change the color of the room just for that. But anyway, that's what those chairs are for. So in case other people were kind of wondering, whoa, where did these come from? I just wanted to also, Jared mentioned about the July 4th opportunity we will have to be in ministry together with our new family as the merger goes, as hopefully the merger goes through, sorry. That will be actually our first opportunity to introduce Bartlett to their new church that they have coming to their community. So that will be really fun to be able to do that right away. That will be, the Bartlett Good Shepherd Church has been doing this, but at that point, it will be saying Good Shepherd. I mean, it will not say Good Shepherd any longer. It will say Journey of Hope. And that was kind of fun. When you see the excitement that Jared was mentioning about this congregation having, they said, "Can we put a Journey of Hope banner up for our booth?" Of course! So there is a lot of excitement. I see the excitement as being comparing to where a few years ago, former Eppirith and former Wesley were. Where we didn't see the hope, we didn't see the excitement, until those merger conversations started taking. And we started seeing possibilities of what we could do in ministry together and how we can reach out into our community. And I see that same thing happening here. So I really, I truly believe that this is a God-led action that we are moving forward on at this point. And as he said, "Please, please, please ask questions along the way. It helps us think about things that maybe we haven't thought about. It helps us know what's on people's hearts and how to go forward with it all." So we're always open to questions and information. And just one last pitch, this afternoon, 3 o'clock, feel free to come for Creative Journey. I think it'll be a fun time. Lisa has created some really cool things for us to make this afternoon. And I'm not real crafty, and I think I can do it. So you all can do it, too. So let us bow our heads for a moment of prayer. Dear Lord, thank you, thank you, thank you for these people who feel called to be here, to serve through Journey of Hope, to inquire about Journey of Hope and how they can be in ministry in this community and beyond. And as we say, be in this community and beyond, we are reaching our arms out even further. And we look forward to that opportunity, to where you call us. And I thank you for each one of these people that are behind me and for the leadership that they provide in the different areas. We are so blessed, and we thank you for leading us, for guiding us, and opening our hearts. Amen. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful rest of your day. The sun is peeking out, even though it's supposed to be raining.